Welcome to our one and only meeting this summer, well, at least in July. Thank you for coming and joining us. I realize the weather's lovely and you might like to be elsewhere, so we do appreciate your support. With that, let's call, well, meeting's called to order. Secretary?
Yes, all members of the board are present and we have a quorum.
Thank you. We have with us in our audience Alex Van Bever, who is from Troop 112 working on his communications merit badge, and we will have Alex lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Alex, please join us.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, we're going to begin our meeting with some very special presentations, and with that, we turn to Dr. Wall.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Mr. Mike Pot and Ms. Chris Crakey to the podium. We're going to recognize the Indiana State School Music Association Award for Carmel High School. Mike?
Thank you so much for having me here today. Chris Crakey senses regrets as he is still coming back from vacation in Colorado. Every year, the Indiana State School Music Association recognizes high school band programs that have demonstrated a high level of excellence in every activity sponsored by the organization within All Music Award. This year, the Carmel High School Band Program was recognized for the first time, by the way, for a program that has had many, many accolades along the years. This is the first time we've qualified for the All Music Award. This year, the high school band program was recognized by ISMA as a program that strives to create a balanced and comprehensive experience for its students. The award recognizes high achievement in marching band, concert band, jazz ensembles, and individual solo ensemble. We had hoped tonight that representing us would have been the four drum majors from Carmel High School Marching Band, as all four of them are also on a very well-deserved vacation. They will not be here, but I'll go ahead and recognize them. They are Ms. Abby Zetzl, Mr. Mitchell Zimmer, Ms. Elizabeth Hamilton, and Ms. Maya Raynon.
And I'm going to invite Mike to come back up. Carmel Clay Schools has been recognized by the National Association of Music Merchants, NAMM, and Mike's going to speak a little bit about the details of the recognition that our music programs as a Carmel Clay School District have been recognized. And we have a number of our music educators in the audience this evening. Thank you for taking time out of your summer schedule to be here with us this evening. We really appreciate it. And as I said, to many of you, when we receive this award at the high school, it's really humbling for me to stand with the music educators that we have in Carmel Clay Schools because they're some of the finest in the nation. So, thank you for all your efforts, that you make a difference in the lives of these young men and young ladies as they pursue their career and their dreams in music. So, thank you very much. Mike?
As Dr. Wall just mentioned, Carmel Clay Schools has been named one of 388 school districts in the nation as a best community for music education by the NAMM Foundation. NAMM is the National Association of Music Merchants. Our local provider, Page's Music, is a member of NAMM and presented the award to Dr. Wall at his spring concert at the high school. The district is recognized for demonstrating an unwavering commitment to providing comprehensive music education for all students. Throughout the country, Carmel Schools is known for the quality of performing ensembles in choir, orchestra, and band. I would like to thank you, our school board, our wonderful administration, and our music educators, who bring their passion for music education to the students of Carmel through elementary music classes, band, choir, and orchestra classes at the middle schools and high school every single day. We have a representative, or will recognize a representative from each school, or a number of representatives from each school. I'd like to first ask Mr. Tim Dawson to come up. Tim was, is the former booster president for the band department and was also the individual who did most of the paperwork involved in the award for NAMM. So, thank you so much. Also like to recognize from the Carmel High School Band Booster Organization our incoming president, Ms. Heather Timmons. From the Carmel High School Choir Parent Booster Organization, Jennifer O'Connor, and also not with us tonight, Brian Rubansky. From the Carmel High School Orchestra Parent Booster Organization, Dolce Martinez, who is unable to attend tonight. From Carmel High School, myself, Ms. Catherine Coons, who is director of choral activities at the high school. Sue Hahn, who is department chairperson and orchestra director, is teaching in Chicago currently and is unable to attend. From Carmel Middle School, Mr. Chris Draven. From Clay Middle School, Rihanna Allen. From Creekside Middle School, Wendy Higdon. And then from where it all starts, and probably some of the most important people in this whole process, our elementary music teachers, some of which are here tonight. From Carmel Elementary, Cindy Barney. From College Wood, Kelly Welsh. From Mohawk Trails, Lisa Sullivan. From Prairie Trace, Priscilla Shaw. From Town Metal, Andy Heimlich. From Woodbrook, Lindsay Ratner. From Cherry Tree, Sarah Hassler. From Forest Dale, Dory Galanot. From Orchard Park, Julie Hulseapple. From Smokey Row, Josh Southard. And from West Clay, Deb Bergman. Thanks so much.
Would you like for me to?
I'm grateful. Congratulations. Thank you for all you do. Thank you so much for all you do and the future that you've set to us. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. And thank you again. Thank you so very much.
I just want the board and the community to know that we have a plaque that indicates that Carmel Clay Schools has been recognized for outstanding support of music education, enriching the lives of children, and advancing student achievement. It's a district award, so it will be displayed in ESC, and thanks again, music educators, for making a difference. We appreciate it.
I do want to, on behalf of the board, thank you very, very much for your time, your effort, your dedication. We realize it extends far beyond the working hours of your, of the day. So, thank you, thank you. Now, with that, we will break for a couple moments. Should you like to go partake in other activities, please feel free. Yes, but you are welcome to stay if you so desire.
Come on up. We'll say a few words and then we'll still have a spotlight on excellence. And your name again?
I'm Jen Bub.
Jen Bub? Okay, Jen?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks. Just real quick, I just wanted to thank Carmel Clay Schools in correlation with the Carmel Arts Council. We've begun a new program. This is our second summer running it, and it's called the Emerging Curator Program. Two years ago, the Carmel Arts Council approached CHS and said, "How can we support your art program?" And I was mentioning our GRR model program, and they said, "Well, what's the GR model?" So, I explained the gradual release of responsibility and the idea of can we create an opportunity for kids to have internships that are real-world applicable. And so, the Carmel Arts Council came up with the idea of doing a curator program where students would be selected based on a formal interview, and the students selected would put together a juried exhibition downtown. And so, this exhibition occurred a couple weeks ago, and the two students were Ally Russell and Ethan McAndrews. And as mentioned, they were on vacation and couldn't be here tonight, but they did such an outstanding job, and we're really excited for this program. We wanted to kind of just get the word out to Carmel Clay Schools to embrace the idea that our GRR model is going beyond the walls of our school district. So, we're very excited for this program. The kids have the opportunity of working with Harriet Workle, who's the IMA curator, and we just received great publicity and just community support. So, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that this program is hopefully going to grow in the future. Thanks.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We'll bring them first spotlight on excellence then. If you give Jennifer all your information, so we can use you as a contact.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. And did you say your first name was Jane? I didn't catch that. Jennifer Bub. Well, thank you so much, Jennifer. Well, great. We look forward to having them back. And seeing that we do not have any public participation, we'll move right along to consent. Can I get a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Is there a discussion? I just have a quick, I think, question. And I know Ryan's not here. I think Dr. Dudley can answer it. Are we adding to supervisors of learning or replacing them?
Well, I sent out a communication on that today to indicate that this is consistent with our plan of succession. We have one of our supervisor of learning who's voluntarily asked to be transferred to Creekside, replacement of that position, and then the other plan of succession was to bring another supervisor in, and that's what we're doing this evening.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Before we go to action, I just want to make note that Marilyn Greenfield, her retirement was this evening. She's committed and dedicated 45 years of service to Carmel Clay Schools, so we'll miss her at ESC, and she's just been a gem for the Carmel Clay Schools. Just wanted to recognize her.
Thank you very much for doing so. So, as we move right along, we have our first action. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. This is a recommended-for-a-bid award for the renovation construction of the cross-country locker room at Carmel High School. It's one of the projects that was included in our 2015 general obligation bonds. It's really a part of ultimately the replacement of the sports building that we have at the south end of the soccer Murray Stadium. And so, this locker room will be provided inside the building proper, and next spring, we will plan to replace that entire building, but this locker room will be in the building. So thus, it'll result in the new building being smaller than the old one. The bids, we were very pleased with the bidding. You can see that on a bid of $591,000, there was a range of $5,000, I believe, between, so the bidders all knew what the project was, and they were very competitive, and it's within the budget we projected. So, pleased to make this recommendation.
Thank you very much, Roger. Make it a motion on table for the approval of the bid award to Carmel High School cross-country locker room improvements.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, seeing there's, yes, discussion.
You did say this came in under, beneath our proposed budget?
It was within the budget a little bit last, yes.
Okay, that's good.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving right along, we have material rental and fee changes. Dr. Dudley?
Thank you. This evening, I bring to you material rental charges and fee changes that I previously brought to the June 22 board meeting for discussion, and so, the spreadsheet reflects any changes in those rental charges and also fee changes.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Make it a motion on the table to approve the materials rental and fee changes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving right along. Dr. Wall, we have your superintendent's report.
Yes, and if I might, I want to draw attention to the overhead, if I can get this dude to come up. That's what I'm doing. Here we go. Just to highlight the C4 Conference that took place last week at Clay Middle School. Wonderful event. We had 374 participants. Those are Carmel Clay employees, either administrators, teachers. They participated in this event with 56 sessions, and majority of the sessions were presented by our teachers as well, with 40 presenters. And then, I'm going to have Amy talk a little bit about the ed camps and just some of the sessions. I know we had a former teacher of the year, state teacher of the year, as one of the presenters from one of the townships, if I'm not mistaken. But I just want to talk for a minute about the energy at the event. I mean, those of us that were there, literally, I would contend that we had national caliber presenters from the keynote, who did a wonderful job, down to the sessions themselves, and I particularly enjoyed Kate and the Google sessions that I attended. Learned a lot and actually used some of that knowledge the next day to get feedback from the district leadership team on their experiences at the C4 Conference and share that back with all the 60 members of the district leadership team. It was just a wonderful energy at Clay Middle School. And I'll let Amy talk to a couple of details on some of the things that we did. Amy?
Thank you. As Dr. Wall said, we did have 56 sessions. Most of the sessions were presented by our teachers. And the sessions ranged from, everything from Google Docs to different Google tools to use, to Baker Spaces, to flipped classrooms, using technology for organization, organization in your classroom, organizing your life. They had, using, you know, different mobile devices, using them as a teacher, the mobile devices, different apps that you can use. It was very exciting. Our keynote was Eric Schenninger, and he presented to all of our, he presented one session to all of our administrators, because this was also our administrative retreat. And then, he also presented a keynote, and then he did two other breakout sessions as well. And so, he did a very nice job. The ed camp sessions, that's the small little piece on the side there, we had 14 ed camp sessions at the end. And what that was, was that's a time that all of the participants had the opportunity to go into different sessions that were facilitated by teachers, that were trained before the facilitation, and it's an opportunity to be able to collaborate with your peers, to be able to reflect on your learning, and talk about what you learned and how you might use that learning. So, it gives you an opportunity right then and there to really reflect on the day and think about, okay, what are the next steps? Because many times, when you go to a conference and you hear all these great ideas, and you learn all these new things, and then you go back to real life right away, it's very easy to go, and Pam and Kathy are both going, "Mm-hmm." We've experienced that. But it's very easy to go back to real life, and then you go, "Oh, what was that?" And this is a way to really take that learning and then say, "Okay, this is something we're going to do," and it's a time to really collaborate with your peers. And the teachers were very excited about the ed camp. And it's a process that we've used in professional development throughout the year as well. It was a way we introduced it to many of our teachers, and it's something too that teachers can use with students as they're reflecting on learning in the classroom. So, I can send you a video link if you're interested in learning more. We have a cute little video link on that ed camp. But that was an exciting piece with the reflection, and we also gave out most of the door prizes at that time too, so they had a reason to stay. So, they were also very excited about that. So, all in all, our second annual C4 Conference was a great success, and we are looking forward to our third annual conference next year.
Amy, a quick question for you. How many more participants did we have this year? Was it similar to last year?
The participants last year, we had approximately, I would say about 50 more participants this year, but the difference was last year, it was open to everybody in the state, and these 374 were all of our teachers. So, we had quite a bit more of our own teachers that participated this year, because last year, it was an e-learning conference.
And one of the challenges we faced, because we had success last year, was how do we get the resources to pull it off for the second annual? So, a big shout-out to our PTOs, Carmel Education Foundation, who contributed to make this a successful opportunity for Carmel Clay Schools. And again, having 374 participants, you know, in July, that was just, just a wonderful, just a wonderful event.
And on one sunny days in July.
Yeah.
Did they, did they have the opportunity to fill out a survey at the end, so that you have some feedback?
We're sending that out this week.
Well, I'll speak to the event. I was able to spend the entire morning attending the classes, and the teachers who presented did an amazing job. So, I mean, very well-educated and really knew their material and presented, it was a very collaborative presentation in each of the classes. Actually, I went to three. But in each of them, lots of give and take, lots of questions, lots of great application in the classroom. I was really, and for my life, so I was very engaged and really enjoyed it. So, thank you.
I have a question or comment or thought. Since it was made possible because of contributions from the Education Foundation and PTOs, is there a way we could send a kudos, so especially when the PTOs come back to school, their first meeting, they can say, "Hey, thanks, everybody. This has helped our teachers and kids."
Sure. Yeah, you're going to be seeing a kudos come across your screen the next couple days for all the planners and everybody that made this event possible. But absolutely, that's, that's very appropriate.
Other questions or comments?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley.
And Dr. Wall, board member reports, and I don't believe we have anything to necessarily share this afternoon or evening. Do you? Please do.
I just want to say what a wonderful opportunity it was on the 10th to go through our summer board workshop and get to know our fellow board members a little bit even more, better. And it's still a privilege and an honor to serve on this board.
Thank you for pointing that out, Kathy. Yes, the board had our summer retreat on July the 10th. Had a great opportunity to work with a facilitator and really further discuss how we're going to propel Carmel Clay Schools into the future with our strategic plan, with our legislative initiatives. It was a real collaborative afternoon. It was a good day. It was a really good day. So, thank you very much for attending, and Dr. Wall for helping coordinate.
Other comments or questions?
Moving right along, our next announcement will be, our next meeting is August the 10th. Other than that, we have a pretty, pretty clean slate for the next few weeks. Please continue to enjoy your summer break. Meeting adjourned.